I will open the Blackstone Millville Regional School District School Committee for August 25th. If we could stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll start with the introduction of members.
Erin Zimmerman, representing Millville.
Charles Dunton from Blackstone.
Tara Larkin, Millville.
Tammy Lemieux, Blackstone.
Erin Bonaco, Millville.
Dan Keith, Blackstone.
Kerry Godett, Blackstone.
Ben Novio, Millville.
Jason DeFalco, Superintendent.
Thank you. And first, we have consent agenda A for warrants minutes of meeting for August 11th. Just looking for a motion for consent agenda A.
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Dan and second by Kerry. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye of approving consent agenda A. Any opposed? Unanimous, thank you. And we're actually just going to move, actually, we, first on our agenda, we have public forum. But I think everyone that's here is scheduled to be with us, so moving on to the report of superintendent. We'll start with marching band and then go to facilities.
Sure, that'd be great. In your, first of all, good evening, everybody. Nice to see all of you. Happy almost New Year.
For you.
For me.
For you.
For all of us. This evening, we have quite a few items underneath my report, but one of the first ones I would like to talk about is an item that was in your packet that was a request from BMMA that I wanted to take a moment to discuss. And our BMMA president is here, if there are any questions, with our marching band director too, of course.
Do you want to?
Oh, sure. If you want to come on up to the table, that's great.
We have our president and vice president.
And our vice president is here as well. Thank you so much for being here.
Yes, of course.
And so I know we have some, quite a, quite a few exciting opportunities on tap for our students this year as far as our band program is concerned. And one of those, of course, is a trip that we'll be doing in the spring where we'll be performing at Disney. But with that, I also know that the BMMA does, like all of our boosters and different parent organizations, does a lot of fundraising. And we are incredibly grateful for the time, effort, and energy that all of our families put into that very important work to help make sure that our students get the best opportunities and experiences that they can get. And part of that this year also means that the work that you all do on a regular basis, just getting our students to and from the different music events during their marching band season, which runs up until November, you know, there has to be, my sense is, a shift in how the BMMA is working to support that work. We did, as the school committee is aware, we did receive a little bit more in our transportation reimbursement funds for this year than what we had budgeted for. And part of, I think, what would be very helpful for our students in the marching band would be for us to, if possible, provide a little more support to their transportation costs during the season, which we do for our other clubs and activities and sports. And so that we can use some of that fundraising money to go toward their, the kids' trip in, in the spring. And so in your packets, I did put an email that Lisa had sent to me, and I did put on the agenda for a conversation about that request and definitely in support of that to help our students really have the opportunities to expand their, their work this year in marching band. So I wanted to bring that forward to the school committee and to let you know that because of the additional funds that we are receiving through transportation reimbursement that we do have the money available to help support the transportation of our band students during the season at about $6,800, $6,850.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion for $6,850 to be moved in a transportation line for band?
So moves.
Motion made by Dan, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Tammy. And any questions for our president or vice president today? Okay?
I have a question. So when you're doing, I saw that you, as I read this email, you came back with a number of $6,850. What has the number been in past years?
65 last year.
I believe it was 65 last year.
And, and we have added a few more shows this year as well.
But typically, that full amount is covered by your fundraising?
Correct, yes.
And not part of our budget?
Is this something we're going to be doing every year? This is something, so I'm not familiar with how, how much we support the band. I know we just, at the end of the fiscal year, we just gave the band a nice little bonus, so that money was just spent on.
Right, that couldn't be used on operating items for the, it had to be spent by, before July 1st.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think from my perspective, one of the reasons that I felt that this was reasonable and as a request, but also doable from, from the financial end, is that what this transportation typically covers is what we normally cover for our athletics teams to travel to and from different games. Now, the, the travel isn't as extensive clearly because we're playing in the, you know, Blackstone, usually the Blackstone Valley area, Worcester County area. But it seemed to me that because we were trying to do something different for our band students this year and give them a different opportunity and experience, that we would be able to help support that. And financially, because we have the additional reimbursement coming through our regional transportation, it seemed like we also were able to, to do that this, this year.
So the fundraising that BMMA does on an annual basis typically supports the operating budget for this type of thing.
That is correct.
But that money's going to be freed up for the kids to be able to.
Assist with that.
Assist with their, because the kids are the ones that do the fundraising anyway.
Yeah.
The money just hugely supports the BMMA bottom line.
Right.
And we're not going to Florida every year?
No. It's been, it's been 10 year, 10 or 12 years?
It'll be 11 years when we go.
I just have a point, I have a question of clarification. For the band, for the, sorry, I have to just get it straight in my head. For the athletic transportation, is that in our transportation line or is that in the athletic budget typically?
That's a great question. I don't know. I can find out.
Okay, because I'm just curious, like, you know, like, I'm fine with this, that's not the point, and this is a special thing, I get it, we have money, which is helpful. But I'm just wondering, long-term, if athletic transportation is in the athletic budget, why wouldn't?
Band transportation.
Band transportation be in the band budget?
I can ask.
As our budget versus BMA budget? So just a long-term question?
Yeah.
That doesn't seem to.
I don't know, do you want to answer that question, Mr. Schaefer?
Well, I, I know that when I submit my budget every year, that I have a line item in, technically, I think it's under the music department budget, that's just for music department transportation.
That's school-based music?
Yes, yeah. Anytime we get on a school bus, like, that's, that's what that entails.
Okay, so that's included in the band budget?
That's.
This is the bottom line.
The athletics, the athletics is in the athletic budget. Is that, just to answer your question?
Okay, but Todd's saying the band budget also has transportation, so this is above and beyond what the transportation is budgeted for in the band budget?
Yes.
Sounds like a temptation.
If I may.
Say three times fast, right?
I don't even think I could repeat.
Follow up on that, anytime you get on a school bus? So, so your transport, like, does that include, like, the, the coach buses or is that just?
Yeah, the coach buses are paid for.
Right, yeah, right, so that includes going to New Jersey and, and you take coach buses to any other shows and?
Just that one.
Just that one. So you, it's the, it's the BMMA that raises all that?
Correct.
And band members, so, and thank you for that, because you haven't been going back to the district for years on all those successful shows and performances that you've done down there as well.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? Ted?
I just think it's a tough precedent to set because, you know, you're going to have other groups that may want to go to travel. If football wants to go and play a team in New York because they have an off weekend, are we going to support their trip to, and their busing? If basketball wants to go play somewhere, if the science department wants to go somewhere? I think if, this has been something that they've covered as a cost themselves, I think it's a, it's a tough precedent to set to, for, you know, more, or groups to come forward in the future that are going to want, you know, that we're going to, how are we going to turn our backs on them?
Yeah, and unfortunately, what has happened in the years, and I'm just going to use round numbers, but if the band budget was $50,000 and we had a year where we cut it by 10,000 and Mr. Schaefer was told to work within that budget, BMMA would take that over. And they, so, so the choice was that they did more fundraising or the kids went to less competitions because we made that cut. So that, that number has gone down from us in years and up on BMMA's side. I don't think this is setting any precedence because it's still fundraising from the kids and at least they're going to benefit from their fundraising this year. Usually BMMA will benefit from it for the whole season.
Yeah, globally. And if I could answer directly your question about, you know, if different groups want to do different things and come forward, if we have the financial resources, the committee, I would come to the committee with that. Because I, I mean, from my perspective, that's why, that's why we have the resources, is to make sure we can provide the opportunities. So if there is a situation like that, and Todd, it sounds like the last time we did this was 11 years ago, but if there was a unique circumstance, and we've had those, just so everyone's aware, where we've had to add a shuttle bus, you know, in the spring for spring sports to get students to, you know, the high school or, and back and forth in middle school or what have you, we do that. So I, I think that's the hard work of trying to figure out how do we keep all of this working for everybody to make sure that all the students have the opportunities possible. So, you know, you certainly would have my commitment to bring that back to the committee to say, you know, X group is looking for this, I think we can do it, here's how, and then asking you for the authorization to do that.
I, I do want to just say, I agree with, I said the same thing to Tara before the meeting. It does, it does, anything you do that's outside of a given budget.
Yeah.
Can potentially set a precedent, and let's not kid ourselves about that. But I'm, I'm in support of this because we have the transportation funds extra this year, but I absolutely, it's the first thing I said when I read it to myself and here, so, just for the record.
It's also up to other groups to come before the board and make requests. So the band is here requesting, and we just happen to have extra money in our budget, and we're coming out of COVID, and it's probably a really good idea to do this and support it. It's not a lot of money.
If we didn't, I would say to the committee, we don't have the dollars to do this, sorry. Truly, I would not recommend from the fiscal responsibility side.
Can I ask my question?
Sure.
The $6,850 is the cost of the trailer to move all of the equipment and everything down to Florida for you guys to be able to use, correct? It's not for?
No, the $6,850, I don't mean to interrupt you, I apologize. The $6,850 is for the regular band season. So we start our band season in September, we run through November, we have either one or two competitions every weekend. That is to cover the equipment going to the shows for the academic year, not for Florida.
Okay.
But, but you're, you typically use your BMMA money to?
To pay for that.
Cover that because you're using your band budget for other things? And that fundraising money that would usually pay for that now can go to the kids' bottom line of?
Correct.
Reducing the cost of Florida.
Exactly, yes.
So if I may, then that brings back to the original. So the BMMA is funding the transportation of the band equipment to the band shows during the school year.
Correct.
Yes, so that's not in the band budget then?
Because the, Dan, you have $50,000 and you choose to use it whatever way.
Gotcha.
What we're saying is athletics uses some line item to do transportation, band at some point said, "We need X, Y, and Z instead to fall under the school budget, so we're going to raise money for the transportation." They just made a choice at some point in time to use their budgeted money from the district a different way, whereas athletics chose to cover their transportation. So, you know, I think it's just, like I said, I, if we have the money, I'm happy to spend it, but, that's what I said.
Any other questions?
Oh, I, I mean, to follow up, I get it, but then without the BMMA, the.
There would not be a marching band season.
The marching band would not be, and the success that they've had over the last 30 or 40 years.
Oh, absolutely.
Would not be getting to the shows unless they were walking.
Correct.
Or they would show up with.
No instruments.
So, I mean, and to Ted's point, if we had the funds, and as a member of the school committee, any program that the opportunity to come, especially one that's successful with the marching band, I would be in favor of giving those children that opportunity as well. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
So there's a motion on the floor to approve the $6,850 to be moved to the band transportation line. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ted abstained. Okay, motion passes.
I'd like to thank you all of you for approving. We're very appreciative of that.
Thank you all for all that you do.
And the kids will benefit from it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And we're just going to.
Is that okay?
We have a facility request with some, with a group here that we're going to take out of order.
Thank you. In, it was not in your packet, we included the facilities request this evening, but if you want to come forward, that would be great. We have a dynamic duo here from the Express Football and Cheer and want to talk a little bit about a request to use, actually, this field for a couple of subsequent games on Sundays for, for the football team, which is a feeder to our BMR Chargers football team. So I don't, do you want to just give a quick overview, Mary Beth?
Sure. So I'm Mary Beth Haynes, I'm the vice president of Express Football, and this is Brian Gartland, the president, he's our North Smithfield, because we are joint with North Smithfield. So unfortunately, this year, our home field is not readily available for us, we are, have many different options out there to find a field. And I thought of our back field, it's not being used for anything except for soccer. So we were asking that, we're not sure if we need it yet for this year, but we are exploring the opportunity in the next year or two to make this our home field if we, if you would allow us to use that.
And so we checked, the field is available, and Mary Beth, I know when you had reached out and shared, you will provide, the Express will provide, it's the lining that will be done?
So, yeah, so we, my husband and I went out and looked at it today, and the way the soccer field is now, we're three feet shy of doing it. So we would need to flip it the other way. So is Mr. Hebert your facilities manager?
Yes, he's right there.
Oh, perfect, so we would work with him to figure out how to go about doing that. We actually use the same lining company that you use, so he does the soccer fields, and we would work with him. We have one portable goalpost that is stored at our field down the street that we somehow need to figure how to get up here if we need to do it. We need to order another goalpost, we have the insurance, we would bring in all of the concessions and the scoreboard, we would bring in anything. So we wouldn't actually need access to the building and ADC Septic, don't get, it's all the porta potties. So we have the porta potties delivered on a Friday and they pick them up Monday morning and lock them, that we have the padlock, so nobody can use them over the weekend.
Don't get me wrong, what she just said sounds very simple.
It actually does.
Thank you for letting us speak today about it. Just to elaborate, one of the things, we're looking for possible long-term solutions here too, and we understand that because of all the logistics that's involved, it's, might be something that we're looking, we're, we're looking for you to give us the, I guess, the authority to kind of explore it a little bit further. The emergency situation that we could be facing, we have, like Mary Beth said, we have a lot of other options out there, but we're, we're wondering if you guys would be interested in let us exploring a long-term option throughout there with us obviously coming to the table with a lot of the work to be done.
Okay. You want to discuss that now or is that something you want to come back with?
I will tell you this, if we get into the weeds, we'll be here for the next three days.
Okay.
But basically, like Mary Beth said, you know, it's building a field, it's scoreboards, it's, it's all kinds of stuff. We think that if we had to, if you gave us the blessing, we maybe could pull it off in the next few weeks. I think that's, it's a, it's going to be extremely difficult. I would probably see you guys every day, but I, I would say we're more up to, I think, looking for a long-term solution if, if it's something you guys would be interested in to get into a look of partnership to, with the field.
And Mary Beth, a lot of the students that play on Blackstone Millville are.
So we have.
Feeds right into our high school.
Yes, so we have 181, a record this year, football, football players and cheerleaders, and it is fifth, it's about 40% Blackstone, Blackstone Millville, 40% North Smithfield, and then we have another 20% Oxbridge, just from all different communities, for whatever reason, have chosen our program. So when I first started 11 years ago, we only had 82 players and cheerleaders, and we have grown this now to feed the BMR Chargers program.
And you all were at our family day.
Yes.
Community Day in May, and you were throwing footballs with the kids and you had a whole event set up outside. It was, it was awesome. You guys did a great job with that.
Just to give you an idea, just a quick overview, we've been around, Express has been around since 1995. We're a very reputable organization since then. We, we have rented fields in North Smithfield at the high school, we rented Oxbridge last year. We are in the league that we play in, we are a model team and organization. We have a lot of challenges with Mass and Rhode Island. I can't even tell you what we had to go through with COVID, we don't even want to talk about that any longer. So I, I would encourage anybody who has a thought about Express itself, I would encourage you to reach out to Oxbridge, reach out to North Smithfield, or any other organization where we play, we're always top-notch, we're clean, we're, we're tidy, we actually have the meadows down behind Roosevelt, is it Roosevelt Field?
Yes, behind the Blackstone Polish Hall. We have that facility.
Our people are really, really engaged with the kids. Like Mary Beth said, we're, right now, we're about 50/50, 50 Blackstone Millville and like the 50 North Smithfield with a couple mixed in there. It's, it's, it's just something we're coming to and see if there's something interesting in.
So long-term, if it was something we were exploring, would you be looking for practice time as well and?
No, so we have a.
Not this year?
No, so behind the Polish Hall in, in North Smithfield, we have bathrooms and concession stand, lights, it's all lined, we are not in, hopefully North Smithfield doesn't take that away from us, we have that locked down. It's just the four Sundays throughout the season, and then, you know, if something, if we were to do long-term and something was to come up, we can always reserve in our league certain weekends. For example, North Smithfield has Pumpkin Fest, they always said you cannot have a home game on Pumpkin Fest. So we, if there was an issue, we can pick our weekends and schedule our schedule around that, around you if, if the opportunity came.
Any question, any other questions for?
So for now, we're just looking at these four dates. To approve the use of this field, you'll configure the best way to lay it out?
Yes.
For these games. That doesn't affect soccer for BMR on these dates?
Yeah.
So the lines, are you said, is that what you're talking about, talking to Scott? Does that affect the lines?
Yeah, so we, we just need to, my husband is the football coordinator, so he said he would definitely be down here if we wanted to move, if we needed to move the soccer field, the soccer field will fit too. The issue is there, we need 10 extra feet for the end zone and then to put our goalpost in, and there was a, the hill, it, it just wouldn't, it wouldn't work. So we would get all of our equipment up here on that day.
So when you say goalpost in, but I also heard portable.
So we have one portable goalpost that we just purchased this year, and it took 18 months to get it shipped here. So I know I'm not going to be able to get a second goalpost here if we do need to use yours in October, so we, one team wants to use the goalpost, we're going to have to go the goalpost and flip it to the other end zone.
It could be, I could just have to do this, I don't know, we're working on that.
These are all of the, and I have to figure out how to get it from downtown Blackstone.
Ted's really telling me he might be for Rax.
Up federal, up federal street. So there's a lot of other logistics that we haven't worked out yet, we needed to make sure that this was an opportunity to pursue.
But this essentially gives the Blackstone Millville kids a chance to really play at home.
Yes, and I mean, if, if things didn't work out and we needed all four, since I took over nine years ago, my goal has always been have two games at BMR and two games at North Smithfield. North Smithfield is turf, Blackstone is not. So we've never pursued it because we all know if we get wet weather and we have five football games, that field is gone, and we didn't want to impact our students at BMR. So we've never pursued that, but this would definitely be something to help kids maybe want to stay and, and do this and stay and be a Charger.
Yep.
If I may ask, so the long-term, when you're talking about the long-term, is that to make that your permanent home field?
We would love to.
Okay.
For the past two years, we've been putting Band-Aids, Brian and I just, every day are putting out fires. This year, we need to find a quick Band-Aid, and then our goal is to not have to go through this every year in the middle of October and find a home field.
Because essentially.
We don't understand it, we have money and we want to give it to people.
Yeah, 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 I get it, I get it.
Nobody wants it. It's amazing to me.
Yeah, I mean, essentially, the, the Express Football is like the farm league of the BMR Charger football team. So you want to, you want to keep it, you want to keep it close, and it actually will encourage more people to stay, I think, and stay and play, you know, so.
So we're in tear on the field, you guys, you contribute to the maintenance and?
So that is all, we would, you know, talk to Mr. Hebert and figure that out if, I will say, in the 10 years, we've never caused damage at, at a, at a field that had to do that, but most definitely, we would take care of that.
Well, you know, just, you know, just it takes, when you're playing sports on a field because seats get maintained.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, even a practice field is actually up kept pretty good, it actually aerates the field as the kids run, run on it. But if, the meadows is in great shape where we play, that's five nights a week too, two hours a night, so of course, here we are, another, another challenge we have to overcome, we have a drought that we haven't seen in 100 years, and the fields are a little, and that's everywhere, obviously.
Right.
So I think that would be a concern I had right away about how bad the field would be. I mean, I'm not going to sugarcoat it, right? Kids play and they, they beat up things and, but that'd be, that'd be something we'd want to talk about more too.
But we did have a Pop Warner out in the spring, I don't know, I honestly don't know what the field looked like after they, but they were out there five, five nights a week.
Yeah, they didn't, I don't think they had it lined, they just used it as a practice facility.
Right.
They didn't have a goalpost or anything like that.
But they were, you know, tough and heavy on their practicing, so.
I was out there today, it looked pretty good. I mean, it's burnt.
I mean, long-term, and, and Dan, you might be able to speak to this a little more, but and the town knows, owns the property at the complex, but BMYSO put a well in over there to, for the irrigation system.
Right.
So long-term, I mean, if that was something that we were entertaining and we wanted to talk about that kind of thing, I don't see why it wouldn't be, because we all know that watered grass is healthy grass. And safer for the kids, safer for the kids too. So what I'm saying is for a long-term upkeep, if we were going to entertain something like that, I think there are lots of ways to explore it, but.
I'll make a motion to approve this request in our hands today.
Okay, so motion made by Tammy to approve Express Football and Cheer facility request for the middle school field, October 2nd, 16th, 23rd, and 30th, and it is all day, 7:30 to 4:30.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Tammy and second by Tara.
And I think for me, the only caveat here is to make sure that we can still use it for whatever we need to, so figuring out the line so that both teams know which way they're running and where they're supposed to do things. It's, that sounds simple, but I bet that's going to be, you know, different colors or whatever.
So I would assume, because we do use the same company, we got it from Coach Uglow, I, you know, we would just have to talk, if we are going to use it this year about flipping, that might make the easiest sense, is just having the soccer field and the football field go the opposite direction of where it is.
So flipping our soccer?
Flipping the soccer field.
Just so the lines?
The lines would match up, just like they would be exactly like it is at BMR.
Yeah.
I'm assuming.
Sounds like the easiest option.
And this, not attached to it is the fee. I know you said you wanted to give us money.
Yeah. I will say, this has been like a panic, like, thank goodness, Mr. Pocky, yesterday. We've been chatting.
Did you say anything about money?
You know, I've always heard the expression, moving the goalpost, but I didn't know we actually-
We're going to move, figure out how to move that goalpost.
They're in group, group three. And then when we, we actually, Scott and I went back yesterday and looked at Mr. Berry's requests last year for, and it was the same, was group three, it was $50 a session, right? Scott, does that, do you have that right?
So was that $50 an hour or $50 a gate?
A day.
It's a day.
A day, don't ask that question.
We'll talk about irrigation next time.
I think I negotiated a better price.
I guess I got a few bucks.
That was just to be here tonight to talk.
Would you like to use a parking lot? No. No, it is, it would be $50 per Sunday, so. We don't have a turf field stadium to offer you.
That's okay.
Yet. Stay tuned. Okay, so there's a motion on the floor. Any other questions or comments for Express? Okay, all those in favor for approving the facility's use for Express Football and Cheer, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, unanimous. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. So I will be in touch.
Thanks, Mary Beth.
And we do have two other facility requests. We can go back to those questions.
The next item on, actually, the next series of items on the agenda tonight are really to give this school committee an opportunity to meet some of our new administrative and leadership team members that I have had the pleasure of spending quite a bit of time with in the past couple of weeks. And they feel the same way, because they're still here, so that's good, they came. So I said to them just, oh, you came back. So that's a good thing. But the first, I would like to introduce our interim, our candidate for our interim business manager. Deirdre, if you want to come down to the table front, Deirdre Farrell Welch, and her resume and contract is in your packet.
Thank you for joining us tonight.
You're welcome.
Did you bring Baxter?
I did not bring Baxter. He would have not survived the boiler room that I just was in very well. But he is home, waiting for his mistress to let him out later on.
So Tammy and I had the pleasure of meeting Deirdre on Monday, and I'll let you finish.
Sure. Yeah, so as you can see by Deirdre's resume, she's had extensive experience, both in the Director of Finance and Operations Business Manager role, but also the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finance and Administration role. One of the things that I think will be very helpful for us in having Deirdre on board with us for this year is actually two main pieces. One is her experience in regional finance. I will say that in our many conversations to date, we spent a lot of time talking about that, in terms of really understanding the regional finance, operations side of the house, and how that office actually runs. Deirdre has had the experience of actually running that, that kind of office. And for those of you that have been really plugged into that, you know that we run as our own small business. We really do. The business office is its own business office. We are not tied into a municipality, which tends to handle benefits and retirees, a lot of the negotiations, contracts, those kinds of things. We run all of that ourselves. We have our own payroll, we have our own bond rating. That's a really big deal. So the fact that Deirdre's had that experience, it will be very helpful to us, that she will not need to come in and learn regional finance. It is a completely different piece than being plugged into a single school district.
You're literally your own city. You have the ability to assess through taxation, you can raise taxation through your municipal partners and your municipal, you are a city, the city of Blackstone Millville.
So it's an important piece of work. Also, Deirdre's work in partnering with the Mass School Building Association, I think, will be very helpful to us, particularly as we are invited into the senior study phase of our statement of interest that we submitted. So I think that that experience will also prove very helpful this year as we work on our search for a permanent position. And I know Deirdre has been very forward about her wanting to help us in any way that she can, she's done that work for many years.
Absolutely.
Anything you want to add, Deirdre?
Sure. It's a pleasure to be in front of you tonight. I've been in the district one and a half days, and it's been a joy, it's been an absolute joy. I've been retired for over six years. I retired after 20 years in the Commonwealth. I have not taught. I left that to my sister, who's the principal of the Oak Bluff School on Martha's Vineyard, and my dad, who is a college professor, the longest college professor tenured at St. Anselm College. He taught sociology for 54 years. I always had the business, finance, operational, strategic, and I remember as a kid watching my father correct papers, and I was always amazed at the blue book. And he would skim it as we were watching college football, and then he would come up with a grade, and I'd put it over there, and when the next grade came with a plus or a minus, it just really amazed me that that difference of a plus or a minus from a grade, I had to know more. And so as I developed professionally, I chose public education, but not from teaching. I could help the city, the town, the municipality, the finance office, human resources, buildings, facilities, so that people like Jason, the administrators behind me that I spent the afternoon with the other day, are so excited, I heard the word jazzed, I'm so jazzed about what I read, or I'm going to try this, or I was jazzed about that meeting. And everybody was so excited about the opening of school, that if I can take anything off of anybody's plate that can contribute to getting direct services to kids while I'm in the boiler room with Scott, where we just were, that's really what I want to be doing for you. I'm constrained for the amount of time that I can work, constrained by being retired. As Jason and I spoke, I'm not doing anything else, so I'm not splitting my time in this district and splitting my time in that district. It's really been a interesting phenomenon on how I got here within two to three weeks, just literally by chance, just by chance. So I'm thrilled to be here. My dining room table is everything BMR. I spent the day in Matt's office, I went through every single one of his drawers. Closets are open.
I have two, so he and I are going to have, he and I are going to have a talk.
So I'm really very excited to be here, to help in any way with my experiences that I can help with you. I took the opportunity to make a few phone calls out to MSBA. I had mentioned that the other day. The same senior study team that's coming here on the 15th is the same senior study team that I did the New Breznerhand School with, our model school building in Newburyport. So I picked up the phone, just thinking I'd be leaving a message, and she answered. I said, oh, hello, and I started to tell her why I was calling, and that now I, hopefully will be working with the Blackstone Millville School Committee. And she immediately said, oh, I remember you, and I hoped it was a good thing, which it was, and we were able to really successfully get through a lot of good conversation about what has changed, but more importantly, what hasn't changed. And the Massachusetts School Building Authority is just quite a new organization that was formed in the Commonwealth. They get $500 million a year out of one cent on the sales tax. They take that $500 million, you apply for it, and they decide, based on that senior study, if you're awarded or invited to participate. But that's $500 million every single year out of the Massachusetts School Building Authority. It's impressive. The program is impressive, it's done very well, it's their program and their money. They want to make sure it's spent like it's supposed to be spent. They'll work with you, but it's definitely their money. But the opportunities that it's provided to public schools across the Commonwealth has been extremely very impressive.
Thank you. Any questions for Deirdre?
The Boiler Room?
The Boiler Room.
That's where our offices is.
We're just touring the facility.
We were touring, and then I picked up, there was some kid with a drum, and they were loading the bus, and I dropped my keys, and I started playing the drums, and really wonderful.
So were you at BMR in the Boiler Room or here?
I was at BMR. We didn't get here, although Scott wanted to show me. I said, I'm going to be late. That's why we scurried in. But we went through the complex building where I was today, so I get to tour that a little bit. The middle school, the gym, the Boiler Room, the little boys locker room, couldn't get into the girls locker room, so we've, we've been around for the afternoon.
Take your time.
That's all I had, I just wanted to make sure that you-
That's not her office. Any other questions? All right. So we do have her contract in our folder for review, and I'm just looking for a motion to approve the contract as written. We did already approve the interim business manager position before we posted it, so. Motion made by Tara, second by Dan.
Yeah, that's fine.
All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you, we are very happy to meet you. Thank you for taking the time to find us.
Pleasure, pleasure. Very, very happy to be here.
It was meant to be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I would like to introduce to you our new lead coach, Mary Colino, if you want to join us. That would be great. And so Mary also was a really great find. Mary is, and her resume is in your packet, but Mary is coming to us from quite a lengthy experience in Princeton Public Schools, where she has served as a science teacher, she has served as an ELL teacher, has done a lot of mentoring for many years, and we're very lucky to have her taking the helm of our teaching and learning and direct support to our coaches, and also had a chance to join our leadership retreat and really get to know the team. So Mary, if you want to say a few words, that'd be great.
Well, I just want to say that I'm very happy to be here. This week has been amazing, and I've met such wonderful faculty members and working with Jason. I'm really excited to take this role on, and it is going to be a very different role than what I've been doing for the past 24 years, being in the classroom, but I'm ready. I do have a degree and a master's in teaching and learning, so this will, that will really help me with this role. And I have mentored, and I teach at Rhode Island College as well, with first-year teachers, so that will help as well in this, in this role.
So wanted to make sure that the committee had an opportunity to meet Mary and-
We have not met.
Hear a little bit about her experience and background and-
Thank you so much for coming up, up for the night. We appreciate that. Any questions for Mary? Did you spend today with the?
Yep.
So you took the bus tour?
Yes, the bus tour, which was very different from where I've been teaching, where it's very, it's very urban, so. But I, yeah, you have, I have to say, the, the bus tour was so great, because the person that, Keith, the assistant, he gave, he has such pride in, in the school district, and it was, it was really nice, it was a really nice thing to do.
Great. So you spent the afternoon with Keith commentating about-
Yes, he gave the tour.
I think there's a future for him.
Well, he knows a lot, and it was, it was really, it was really, it was, I loved it. I think it's such a great idea for everybody to, that comes to teach, to see where their students are coming from. And so I was really, I was actually thinking of driving around, looking at where I was going to be teaching, so when I heard that we were getting on a school bus, I was really happy about it.
Yellow limousine.
Yes, yellow limousine, so.
And that's exactly why Jason introduced that a few years ago, was saying that they need to know the community, that, you know, that-
Yeah, it's important. Years ago, I had a professor that told me that, that you should always drive around and see who the, where, you know, where your kids live. And so I have always tried to be a, you know, an active part of the community where I taught before with my kids and with my students, and so I was really happy to see where they're coming from now.
Great, great. Any other questions for Mary?
I just have a comment, as a fellow at Rhode Island College alone. I'm really excited about your background with MLLs. I think that knowing you're going to be working with all folk, all the kids in our district, I think that MLL experience lends itself to help in so many areas. So I'm super excited about that, that piece of your resume, so welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Mary, what's MLL?
Multi-language learner.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Sorry, I usually, I'm usually so good about that. I apologize. That's what I have my master's degree in as well. Multicultural special education. Welcome aboard.
Thank you, yes, welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm sure we will see you again.
Welcome.
Thank you, Will.
I think you'll be seeing a lot of Mary, yeah.
Yes.
The work that we'll be doing together.
Let us know if we can support you in any way.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Thanks, Mary. And last but certainly not least, I would like to introduce our other Mary, our new Mary. We have a lot of Jills and Marys in the audience tonight, but the Mary Cotillo, our new principal of the middle school. And I have to tell the committee, because you won't see this for a couple of days, but I just had all of them and our new AD and our returning administrators in a, we were recording a podcast that is going to go out about the start of the school year, we're going to be sending to everybody. So all of these wonderful people were just here, talking into that mic for something a little bit different, but, and it's happened, I'm glad to see you're all still as excited as you were a couple of hours ago.
Well, Jill just bought us BLTs and milkshakes at the Beef Barn, so. Yeah, so we're great. I mean, that happens every school committee, right? Okay. Set a precedent.
Best milkshake for the dollar.
How does the school committee get in on? Maybe we could have our meetings at, that works, that would work.
There is one problem with us. The superintendent is a vegetarian.
Oh. Grilled cheese?
And a salad, grilled cheese, yeah.
We are very glad you're here.
Would you like me to introduce myself initially?
That would be great.
I think you know everything you need to know, though, right? So my name is Mary Cotillo. I am beyond excited to be the new principal of the middle school here. I am starting my 21st year in education. All of that has been in middle school entirely on purpose. I love them, I love middle schoolers, I love middle school teachers, I love everything that has to do with early adolescence, all of the awkwardness, all of the passion that goes in, that comes along with it. It's just absolutely what gets me going every day. So I started my career as a seventh and eighth grade English teacher in Franklin, and then I moved into an assistant principal role in Franklin. From there, I moved to an assistant principal role in Mansfield, and now I am here. When I am not teaching, I am one half of a literacy advocacy group known as the Crazy Reading Ladies. Our students named us that years ago. We taught in classrooms next to each other. She was the reading specialist, I taught eighth grade, and they started saying like, oh, you're one of the crazy reading ladies. So we embraced it, have T-shirts with it, the whole nine, so we do professional development and literacy advocacy. We did a bunch of student programs, so that's kind of my thing. Most of what I do, I approach from a literacy perspective, but that's, that's me, and I'm thrilled to be here. Great.
And also, Mary had time to spend at our leadership retreat and part of our new staff orientation, which has been really kind of interesting, because you're, the new staff in the orientation participating, and then meeting with your new teachers.
Yes.
So there's a lot of new going on in that.
Yep, yeah, it was great, but, you know, we're all in the same boat together, so we're all going to grow together. Yep, yeah, it was great. But, you know, we're all in the same boat together, so we're all going to grow together. We're going to bond this year. I'm really looking forward to growing with them and, you know, we'll be able to look back and remember, hey, remember that day? I think that's going to be fantastic and I can't wait to get to know the veteran staff.
Yeah, I think, and there is a bigger number in this building this year for new hires.
Yep, yep.
So I think that's a very positive way to look at it. And I say bless you for the love of middle schoolers. But, I mean, actually, I think Deidra said it to Tammy and I the other day, there's a special place, there is a very special place for middle school teachers, principals. And that age group is, it's hard. It's hard.
I, well, I mean, I don't have much to compare it to, right? Because I've done my entire career in middle school, but I do have two children. I've parented both of them through middle school. I, there was a period of time where I subbed and the sub caller asked me if I wanted to take the intensive behavioral sub-separate group in a middle school or a kindergarten classroom. And I said, "Oh, don't put me in kindergarten." I just, I like, I like my middles.
I watched the Facebook Live where people were asking, I never popped in and asked a question, but I was listening. I really liked your answer for devices, so phones and such for middle schoolers.
Yep.
Looking forward to see what you do with that.
I need to talk to the staff on the first couple of days just to make sure that I have their buy-in and support. Because without it, it would, you know, crash and burn, but I feel like, I'm hopeful that for those who weren't able to tune into that. My perspective is that it would be good for our students to have the time away from their device. And I would like the devices to stay in the lockers. And, you know, we have one-to-one Chromebooks now. We don't need it for technological access. There's all kinds of social emotional reasons for them to have some time away from that. Now, the concern is often the safety aspect, right? Parents are concerned if something were to happen, how would they get in touch with their child? And I have all kinds of answers or attempts to reassure a parent in those situations. But I would like to start the year with the students having their cellphones in their lockers. I don't think the students need to have their cellphones in their backpacks, in their pockets, in their binders. So I have to talk to the staff and kind of see where the culture of the school is now and how much of a shift that would be. We'll see.
Yeah, I think at one point in your answer to that question, you mentioned that it's, it's just a good break from, from it. You know, and they're able to focus more on what the task in front of them is, so.
Sure.
I look forward to seeing where that goes.
Thank you, me too.
Any questions for Mary? Advice or? Well, thank you so much for being here tonight. We look forward to working with you and let us know if we can support you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. It's nice to meet you all.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now Jill, was the milkshakes coffee, coffee milkshakes? Did you give her the true Rhode Island?
The, the next item, I really just want to remind our school community about our family welcome center and student registration process. As of September 1st, we will be registering all new students and our new family welcome center in central office. So remember, we had discussed, you know, that parent that's got two or three students in different schools that has to run around and register their families, their students in different schools, they won't need to do that anymore. So we'll be putting out information on our website. We have been working on training our central office person. She's been partnering with the administrative assistants out in the building. So there'll be a nice partnership there to help our person learn that process to make sure that they are registered correctly. And also to our families that are in need or in looking for additional support, our district social worker is part of that office, Sarah Rodriguez. She's been doing really good work with one of our local churches around back to school backpacks and supplies. She's been dropping those off at homes for families that don't have transportation, that can't come pick those up. And so it is just another resource that we're putting out for our school community if we have families in need, food, shelter, clothing, anything that we can be supportive of. To help our families be, be stable and successful and that's, you know, that's the goal. So it's really kind of twofold, new registrations and a one-stop shop for any families that may be in need. Also, having the registration in the family welcome center is going to be really helpful. It'll actually help us catch those families that are moving into our community that are in need of support right away. So that, you know, there doesn't need to be a two or three month kind of lag time between trying to figure out what's going on with a particular issue. We'll be able to actually have supports in place right away when they start.
Well, families, if families withdraw from the district, will they also withdraw from that office so that we can get some feedback on the whys and the wins?
Absolutely. And I have some information for us to kind of process tonight when we talk about the enrollment piece. I'm glad you asked that, Tammy. Thank you. That'll give us a good opportunity to capture that information all in one place. So really looking forward to that. I also want to say, just on that note, our food service program, I know we talk about, we've talked about them in the past and the work that they've done in our community. This summer, the summer feeding we did in our school programs was great and that's almost to be expected, right? You'd assume that they would do that and they fed the Boys and Girls Club students. But the community feeding, the pickups that they did, we served over 3,200 meals. That's a pretty amazing lift that our staff did this summer. And it, and it was, you know, yesterday was the last pickup, but I just have to say this and I, this was shared from one of the food service workers that was just really blown away. Maureen Gonzalez, our food service director, actually went to her brother-in-law's and got just a huge amount of fresh corn in the cob that she just included on her own in, she didn't have to do that. You know, she wanted to. She, you know, this, the food service staff cares, all of our staff, but they care so much about our community. And go out of their way a lot to make sure that they're there when our, when our parents and children need them. Also Jenny Remka, who's not here tonight, but she volunteered at every single one of those pickups. I just thought that was tremendous. She didn't have to do that, but she was, she made sure she was here to, to help hand out the food every single Wednesday. And so just a shout out to our team as we're talking about families in need. And, you know, one of the, one of the parents asked Maureen, you know, are you, are you going to be able to do this next summer? And Maureen said, "I'm not sure, but if we can, you can bet we will." When we restarted that just after 4th of July, we had parents in line, many of them pretty emotional about being, you know, and just being grateful that they needed this. Because of the cost of food, particularly with inflation and everything that, and their kids are home, you know, all day or a large part of the day. I'm sure like yours, mine are completely eating everything in sight and it's insane. I have two grown boys. So the fact that we were able to do that, I just think is a, is a, is an important piece to share. And I'm really humbled and grateful to our food service team and everybody that put so much into that. But with that, if our families tuning in into, you know, anyone that may be aware of families that are in need, our family welcome center is designed to do just that. So we are here to support our families in any way we can. Shifting gears, and Tammy, that was a nice segue on kind of that enrollment piece. But in your packets, you have this evening an updated student enrollment and class size data table. And if you look at the elementary grades K through 5, you will actually see the class sizes. You'll see the breakdown. Does everybody have, I have multiple copies if anyone needs another one. I had emailed the update, but I brought a copy too. So you'll see for grades K through 5, the actual class number, so the number of sections, and then the actual number of students in each one of those sections. So you can see in K, grades 1, and 2, that class sizes are very comfortable between 18 and 20. In grades 3, they range between 21 and 22. Grade 4, between 20 and 21. Grade 5, we are at 26 in every grade level, in every classroom, excuse me, at that grade level, so we are watching that closely. And we'll be looking at the enrollments over time to see if there's anything that we're going to need to do as a result of that. But right now, this is where our numbers stand. One of the pieces that I do want to draw your attention to is I think it is important to highlight is particularly grades K and 1. So if we think back about our demographic study that we had done when we submitted our statement of interest and we looked at that 10-year projection, demographic study that was done. We saw lower class sizes coming in. We're seeing that starting to happen now. So you can see this year's first grade is 75 and this year's kindergarten is 95, which is good. It's a little bit of a bump. We're happy to see that increase frankly. And the PK at the bottom is at 85 students and we still have room. Remember, pre-K is grades, I'm sorry, is ages 3 and 4. So these are 3 and 4-year-olds. And we still are accepting applications, Ms. PG, I believe is correct, for our preschool. As you know, we've been trying to expand that. So you can see where the numbers stand by grade level. Millville Elementary is fully built out, which we're really happy about, probably no one is more happy than Ms. Schaefer, who has had her first year as a principal every year now for like three years in a row. Because we keep building out and expanding MES. As you know, we did it one year at a time so that we weren't shuffling kids all over the place. I think it was the right way to do that. So they are now at about 370 students, which is a shift for them. The complex, you can see grade 3, grade 4, and grade 5 totals to about 360 students. That's as small as they have ever been. So I think Dr. Remka is having the other issue, going from nearly 600 students to now 360, which is a big shift for her and for that building. The middle school enrollment for this year currently is at 352. The high school is at, just at 400. Our total district enrollment right now is 1,482 students, which is, which is very low for us. So one of the pieces of information that I think is really important to discuss with that number, because we hear a lot from the community that, you know, what are you doing to keep our kids here? Why are so many kids leaving for school choice? Why are so kids, so many kids, you know, choicing out to different buildings in different communities? I wanted to delve into that. So what I have in front of me, and I will get cleaned up to be able to share with the, not only the school committee, but also the town administrators. Because I think it's very important that we look at this from a town perspective as well. We looked at all of the withdrawals, school withdrawals from last July to last June, right? So we captured that time intentionally because that's a time that has just passed. It's not live. It's not in the moment. It's not happening. It's not changing day to day. This is a full snapshot in time of last year's enrollment. And what we learned, and I will, I will discuss this by school. But at the JFK AFM complex of all of the withdrawals, so the kids that were enrolled that were there that left. And we had a total of about 35. 30 of those were because the family moved out of town. It was not school choice. It was not because there was something wrong and they decided, you know, I love living in Blackstone or Millville, but I'm going to choice my kid to Uxbridge. The school choice numbers, just as an FYI there, were 1. It does not include charters. That's school choice. That's choicing out. So those were just families in that snapshot of time, not families that already left, but just in that year, 30 of them left the towns of Blackstone and Millville. I just think that's important to mention. Because I do think that, and we're going to see that a similar pattern, by the way, as we keep looking at the other schools. That it warrants a much more collaborative and bigger conversation with our towns to say, how do we work together in a way to keep our families living here in our community? And the reason I mentioned the school choice piece is only because if families wanted to stay in Blackstone and choice to Bellingham, Mendenupton, Uxbridge, Douglas, they can. So these are families that moved, right? And we certainly can delve into the weeds on that and trying to find out the why. Was it a rental issue, you know, was it the rents went up and, or, you know, sold their homes and moved to different towns altogether? And we do have, in many cases, Tammy, to your, kind of your data question, we do have where a lot of those families went to. So we do have a lot of that information. Please.
You haven't gone to the high school yet, but school choice, when you get to the high school level, that includes those that choose to go to Valley Tech?
Yes, so that number's larger, but that number we know and I have those numbers too. Because, you know, we have Norfolk Aggie, BVT, and Tri County. So we have that data here. And again, I want to get this cleaned up so that I can actually share it with everybody. This is just very kind of raw data that we just finalized this morning. We then look at Millville Elementary and we had, last year, again, as a snapshot, we had 24 families that moved out of town. They relocated.
How many overall withdrawals?
We had a total of, let's see, 24, 25, 30. So out of 30, total family withdrawals or student withdrawals, 24 moved.
Pre-K, pre-K to first or?
That is K to 1. The PK numbers are not in this, are not in this batch. The other piece that is important to remember is, and we know this, but families have multiple kids, right? So you might have a student that's at the complex and at the middle school.
Well, that.
Right, it's one family, but that student counts twice because they came from different buildings. Does that make sense? So those aren't unique, unique, right? They're not unique families. They're students that may be part of the same family. I just wanted to capture that piece. Then we look at the middle school. So that, that BVT, that transitional piece, we had a total. These are students that left at middle going into high school. They're captured as middle school because last year they were 8th graders, right? So we coded them as exiting 8th grade to go to middle school, but there, that would be that 8th to 9th grade bridge. There were 38 families that chose BVT and Norfolk Aggie.
So 38 school choice.
Yeah, so we had one Douglas in that, in that category, one Douglas Public Schools. We had 15 families that moved. We had four that left for charter schools and we had three that left for homeschool. So you can start seeing the numbers are much larger there, which for the BVT and the Bristol, I'm sorry, the Norfolk Aggie piece, you know, we've, we've known that information for quite some time, but.
What was the total?
15 plus 38 plus 4 plus 3. I haven't added that yet. Sorry. 50, let's see.
60.
Right, 60. Is it 60?
2?
Yeah. Then we look at.
Charter school, just so I'm clear, is that like OSV? So the Catholic school?
No, it's Franklin. Most of the kids that leave go to the charter school, Benjamin Franklin Charter School. Then we have the high school. So again, this kind of snapshot in time, that last school year. Last year, our high school lost 24 students to moving. So they moved out of Blackstone or Millville. They lost four during the year to school choice. And then we had zero that left for charter and we had no new families that homeschooled. So there was families moved or, or four families, students went to school choice.
Do you have also the information that you could share, like how many kids chose Black's BMR for school choice? Right, came in.
Absolutely. Yeah, we definitely keep that, we keep that data. I only brought this because of the enrollment piece that we're looking at.
Do you know where the school choice is?
Yes, I don't have that here. We just were looking at numbers, but I do have, I do, I can get that information.
So Jason, can I, so with the thinking that the 8th graders are included in this middle school number. Does the, the 5th graders go into 6th grade? So those kids that are going to Mount for, for middle school, those are included in the 4. The complex has 35 total withdrawals, 30 families moved out.
Yep.
One school choice. The other four presumably went to like a private situation?
Yes, but let me just double check. Bear with me one second. We had. Homeschool, we had, let's see, we had one that was a school choice. For the JFK AFM complex combined. complex combined. We had one that was school choice. We had two, three that were charter.
Three charter.
Yep. And then we had one, two, three that were homeschool.
That number does not equal 35.
So we have 20, we have 22.
From the complex.
Yeah, it's broken down by the.
You originally said there were 35 withdrawals, is that number not correct?
There were 30 families that moved.
Yep.
You have to, it's broken down by school.
Okay.
So I don't know, we still do our data this way. There's 22 from AFM and there's eight from JFK. So there's 30 that, do you see what I'm, that's, so there's 30 from the complex that moved out of town.
Okay.
Then we have the choice numbers, which was one.
So that's 31.
One, yep. Then we have three for homeschool.
What grades are in JFK?
Last year was second.
So then here, you said three was charter and three were homeschool, right?
But this is just one year's numbers of the kids.
This was just last year. You guys are killing me.
This is like the end.
I'm sorry. Well, originally you said 35 withdrew from the comp, you said from the complex, so I was thinking.
There were 30 that moved.
Breakdown should be 35, but it's not adding.
I think I was off by one. Was I off by one?
True knowledge, is that number consistent, those that leave after middle school, those that school choice out? I think you said 38 students either went to BVT, Norfolk Aggie or something? Is that?
This was a higher, yeah, we had more students applying out for high school this year than we have in the past.
But didn't we have less at BVT this year?
We had less at BVT, but we had more interest in, in Aggie and Tri-County, but they didn't end up, they, so the good news is they didn't all end up going. But we had more interest, which is.
Is it, is it still, I'm talking 20-something years ago, when I was doing that school choice in eighth grade, so you couldn't pick one school unless, over the other, unless they didn't offer the same things?
Yes, that is still correct.
That's still the caveat, so.
Yeah, and we fight that battle, just so you know, a lot, and we lose, because if, they have very similar programs, but they'll call it a different name. So we will, I have to sign off on those, so we will decline to approve those requests if they have a similar program at BVT that they didn't get into. But the parents overturn, or go to the commissioner's office for those to be overturned, and they get overturned every time. So we do try to fight them though.
Right, like I, my neighbor's a junior there in Norfolk Aggie this year, but she went for horses and agricultural studies, which obviously is not something that Valley Tech offers.
That's right.
So I just didn't know if that was still the case, but we try to.
Yep.
Based on your numbers out of the 160 that are totally out, more than half, 90 of them moved approximately in that area, so.
That was the point that I wanted to make this evening, is that I think there's a lot of work to do in trying to really get under the surface and partnering with the towns around, how do we figure that out? And what's going on there? And I only mention it because, you know, we'll sit in meetings often and the question is very quick to be asked, you know, what are the schools not doing to? And I think everybody's working hard. I'm certainly not doing a finger pointing thing. I think the question needs to be, how do we work together to try to address some of this? Because I do think it's actually a bigger issue. Because if it was just a school issue, we would have far more school choice of people leaving.
Yeah. The question I would ask it when I was in a different seat is the same question Tammy asked and Tara, like how, do we know why they're leaving? Not that it's your fault they're leaving, that they know why, why, why they're, why they're leaving. And same question can be put back on the communities, like why, why are our students?
Why did 30 families move?
Why are our students leaving the districts?
This is new information. I don't think we've ever looked at it this way. We've always seen the kids leave and say, well, why are they leaving our school?
Right.
But the families are leaving town.
They're leaving the town.
And to be clear, if they're staying in Massachusetts, they could keep their kids here. They could, school choice.
Yep.
Yeah.
But these are full withdrawals. It is a lot, I mean.
It's a big commitment.
Yeah.
Yep.
I would just guess if they were leaving for, you know, financial reasons and not being able to afford to stay in town, they probably wouldn't be able to afford to keep their kids here, with the transportation end of things, things like that.
So what I can do is, we can clean this up and take the, I'll take like the names off it obviously, but I'll leave the rest of the data and then send the numbers to you so that you'll actually have, then you'll have what I have. And you'll be able to take a deeper look at that and see. And it's important too, just, this was just one year. So this doesn't account for everyone that's going out for school choice or for everyone that's a BVT. It was just that snapshot in our data from that one academic year. The worry of course is, right, when you look at our enrollment, rinse and repeat this data with 75 kids enrolling in, you know, kindergarten, 95 kids enrolling in kindergarten, and we're going to be getting squeezed very hard from both ends. And I think when we, when we're thinking about our overall enrollment, our real estate, I think there, you know, there's going to need to be some, some good conversation about what this looks like, both short-term and hopefully when we get invited into a pipeline for a new facility, what really should that be?
I mean, when you look at that first grade number and you think, when they get to sixth grade, you lose a couple, so then you're at 73, and then you get to high school and you lose 20, you know, we always lose at least 20.
But even if you look at grade six with 95, and you put the loss through them before ninth grade, I mean, that's just a couple of years away.
We can't have a graduating class of 70, 75.
Jason, do you have the numbers for like the 22, 23 school year of how many kids, like that year, that our school choice, homeschool, like overall through the district?
Yes.
Kind of like what our enrollment would be if they all stayed?
Yes, we have that.
The ideal.
And does that include private school? You, you know who goes to private school too, yeah?
We track those, yes.
Is it, is it too much to ask? Is it a lot of data pulling to pull like the last three or four years back from this last year you just pulled? So when we can see the trend?
What I, yeah, so this level of kind of data might be hard to get, but what I could do is the last three or four years, homeschool, school choice, like those numbers we have.
Yeah.
So that I could pull.
We just wouldn't know how many of them moved.
I wouldn't have that data.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, at least we're starting now.
But, but moved is moved.
Right.
I mean, you can't, there's nothing.
It's those two that are making the choice.
Right.
For something else.
Right.
They're still living in town, but.
And an interesting piece that I think speaks to the mobility factor that a lot of our families are dealing with, some of, not many, but some of these families have moved back into town and re-enrolled. Not many, but some have, which is always. They left, they moved, say, last January and, you know, went to town X, and then they moved back to Blackstone or Millville this school year. So we had a few of those families in that situation, which was kind of interesting.
You also had a pandemic where people were moved, staying with other family members.
Past few years.
There's a lot of things.
It's been married. Overall, it's been just mobile.
Yeah, yeah.
But Erin, we can definitely look for that, for that information. And I can get this all cleaned up and so that it makes more sense and my numbers, I do know how to add, although I'm struggling with that.
That's just a lot of pages.
Yeah, so that's trying to line it all up was.
Yeah, middle school was 60.
Thank you for that.
Sure. If I may just, I just don't want it to be lost, that, like the class sizes. You know, they're all fair, you know, and, and that was an argument a few years ago. So, you know, with, with, they're all reasonable-sized classes, and that's, you know, a big accomplishment from, with the district getting the, you know, regionalization finalized. It's, I'm sure you guys remember, it was a good.
Well, yeah, because otherwise we all had, you know, the 12 and 18 and then. But can you imagine what first grade would look like if we had one section in Millville?
Yeah.
I mean, the, it would be, it could be single digits.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
So everything happened at the right time, really. And, and the proof is in the pudding that, I mean, we have six sections of second grade. So that talk about, you know, the regionalizing would reduce class, class sections is not true.
Did grade five have a sudden influx of students?
I was wondering.
Yeah, this summer we had a few. It seemed like everyone that enrolled for the complex was in fifth grade.
So we'll keep an eye on that.
So we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna have to watch that closely. We have a few more and we're gonna have to talk about, we will have to come together and talk about adding a, a fifth grade teacher.
Understanding that the high school numbers obviously vary for class size because of whatever extracurriculars or whatever they've chosen from their list of opportunities, but is there like an average roundabout number, like for a high school classroom size?
Jill, do you have, that's a really hard one because of the some.
You know, we've got, you know, we've got like Spanish classes that have 21, 22, and then, you know, there might be a class size 14. It's going to depend on what that is. I know I've looked at the, I remember the science members, and I've got classes that was at 21, 29, and then I've got one that's got 10, because of just where it falls and how the schedule works.
Right.
So, yeah. It does balance out with an average for teachers, but you might have that.
It speaks to Tammy, to some of the stuff that we've, you know, we've talked about, about when you've got those sizes and those sections and the class offerings and, you know, how being small can be a challenge.
Numbers matter.
Yeah, on that side of the house. So more to come on this, but I wanted to make sure you had an updated enrollment chart and at least what we've been able to garner from our preliminary information regarding why the withdrawals. And so I'll clean this up and get this out, and I am going to meet with the town administrators to share this with them, it'd be helpful for them to see, to at least start a dialogue, kind of a so what, now what? Like how do we work together to try to keep our families here? And I'll get that information out to you on, on school choice and homeschool to everybody. Okay. And then the last item on my report is an overview for our school year 21, 22 AP results, which you have the PowerPoint in your packet, and Ms. Fallis is going to walk us through our strengths and opportunities and next steps.
I'm ready, Tammy. I'm ready. I remember this being, so. I made it pretty for you. Did you watch last year's meeting?
Good to see you, Jill.
No, I was, I was here last year. I said, I said to Scott, I said, you know, I'm not, I presented a number of times, I'm not usually nervous, but I said, I'm waiting for Tammy and I'm nervous. No, I'm just joking, you're lovely. Okay, so I made it nice and pretty for you on my new, my new, my new find, my newfound toy of Canva. So I just wanted to let you know, who is it that's taking the exams? We had 58 students who took 88 exams. That is kind of on par of what we had last year as far as the breakdown, similar to, I think last year we had 91 exams taken, so we're three shy. And the gender, again, it's trending towards the females, however, we had a couple of students who hit the fives for, for us as well, so that was very exciting. 10th grade is our only US history class, it's just US history one, it's the first opportunity for our students to take AP. It can be a little daunting and overwhelming to do that. We are trying to increase our numbers. I do believe there are 12 or 13 enrolled in AP US history currently to going into next year, so hopefully that will stay nice and strong. And then our 11th and 12th graders, you see the breakdown as far as our race and ethnicity that is reported by the college board. All of these statistics are coming right from the college board. And then as far as our fee reduction, we had 15 of those 58 students. So that, those are the demographics as far as who is taking the AP exam. As far as results are concerned, we did offer new courses from last year, so we dropped, so last year we had an AP chemistry that was online, we did not have that. This year we are offering that online for next year, and the goal is for the year after that, there will be, there is a large cohort that will be taking that with an actual targeted teacher. So that is the plan for coming up. The drawing we did not have last year, but we had three this year, and.
Was that a VHS class or?
Nope, drawing, drawing was with Ms. Robertson. And then, like last year, so we had psychology last year, we had two students that was online, same with statistics last year, that was online. This year, we didn't offer that. We didn't have Spanish last year, we did this year. And Christina will gladly tell you that she scored a five, so that was very, very exciting for her. So you can see what we have as far as who took it and what they scored. If you're unfamiliar with the AP, five is the best, one is not great, but we're, you know, the focus, having been an AP teacher, really the goal is in, and it has been for, we're really looking to move, you know, those ones to twos, and you really want to see as few ones as possible. Times have really shifted depending on colleges and what they're accepting as far as whether they will take a three, a four, or a five. Those are traditionally the ones, the scores that they would have. So it's going to vary based on what you have. One school may take a three and it's no problem, another school may not even take any, even if it's a five. So that's very, that's different. I will say for next year, our enrollment has increased in our AP literature, that we actually are offering two sections of AP literature next year. So we have another teacher who has been trained in that, so we're excited about seeing that for next year. And so our takeaways, we did see a number of increases from last year for our number of fives. Last year we only had one, this year we have four, which we're very pleased with. I wanted to shout out to the junior class, which is our rising seniors, and of those students who took that, took that exam, I think there's 24 is what I had, no, no one scored a one, it was a two or higher. So that's really great to see them doing that, and actually two-thirds of them scored a three, four, or five. So, and two of our juniors scored a five, so that's, that's, we're really pleased with that. I note, I noted the numbers there, we were three short, shy of what we had before. There was some advertising with AP, there needs to be more intentional, the courses that grew were the courses where teachers were intentional by going into the classes, and I think a little bit was a little too late. And so now what we are scheduling with the counseling department will be that as part of our, when we are signing up and doing our course selection offerings, we're going to have the AP courses advertising in the lunchroom, and we're going to have AP students, not the teacher, but the students going into our feeder programs, both CP and college, whatever the, the class is, because there's not an honors US history one, and telling them what the, what the program is like and hopefully recruiting them to do more. The other piece is preliminarily, we still have not received our MCAS scores beyond the raw cut, but the, it does seem like the trend is, is on par with what we're looking at. As far as next steps, we had a really interesting conversation in our leadership team meeting yesterday, which really didn't have anything to do with the presentation, but it actually ended up going in this, and one of the things we looked at was the fact that we're, you know, we really are focusing on all students and looking at intervention, but are we focusing on the acceleration as well? And so there was a really rich conversation. Oh, did I not do that? Thank you, Jesse. I'm not paying attention, so, too many thanks. We are going to start really looking and being intentional about what is it that we are going to do? And so if you look at the last slide for the next steps of looking not only in the data dive for the AP teacher, was, which was really always, I had a meeting with the AP teacher last year, that was it, I'm being just transparent. But let's talk about the skills that they were scoring for the data and where is that, where are we missing? Like what are we not doing in our feeder programs in that accelerated P? Like, what are we not doing in our feeder programs in that accelerated piece to, to miss that? Um, had a long, uh, conversation with the math teacher with the math numbers. The calculus numbers are lower, um, you know? Uh, and I was pleased to say that the first thing that, um, you know, the teacher said was, um, I know we had COVID, but we should have done better. So I, I, I did appreciate that. Um, but looking at, tapping into some professional development. I think there are some scores when we go back and look that have kind of remained stagnant. And so let's get some PD, an intentional PD for the, for the teachers. Um, we will be looking to transition some, um, teachers into other roles. Um, there will be a new AP chemistry teacher, um, like I said, for twenty-three, twenty-four that we'll be looking at to, to the professional development, um, uh, and, you know, possibly US history and things like that. So. I'm ready.
Do you know the enrollment for the, um, AP Calc for this incoming year?
Yes. I do. I wanna say eleven. I do. I think I wanna say eleven.
I just wonder if kids, if they see this, if it steers them away from it. But I don't know if the da- data shows that or not. I mean, honestly, we had stats and it's gone. So maybe that is, the proof is in that.
That's, yep. Yes, we wouldn't have had, um, the statistics piece. Um, it's just offered online. I do think we have somebody enrolled in that, but I, there's, they had, gave me, they sent me a list, but we're in that, um, revolving door in the counseling department right now with the ad drops. So I don't wanna give you a number and then say that's not.
Kudos to biology.
Hundred percent. There are, I, there, that number tripled for next year. There are quite a number of them. Yep.
Is that one teacher?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, the highlight I get from, I think, from our last meeting into this meeting and what we're doing with that, um, accelerated academy or what, what is that?
Grade eight academy?
Grade eight, yep. The grade eight, what, I don't know what to call it. Um, is that they'll take algebra in eighth grade, which then will hopefully build that foundation for calculus. You know, a, a lot more solid, um, through the years at the high school. So I, I think that's, um, a, a very big plus to what we see. And I, and I think this calculus number this year, um, and I didn't go back again, but this is unusual, the, the number of ones is unusual for this year.
Yes.
So it is what it is and you move forward.
Um, that dropped from, um, thirty-nine percent last year.
Yeah, so it is what it is. I mean, the computer science one is one of the newer ones, and that seems to be going really well.
Uh, and we're also going to be intentional, so I will be, um, back here, yeah? Uh, because I'm gonna be applying for the Project Lead the Way, um, computer science grant. I'm hopeful that we'll be able to get that because computer sciences, this is the only class that it is. There's no feeder program to that. And by, um, tapping into the, the Project Lead the Way computer science, it offers an introduction to computer science principles, cybersecurity, where they actually have their own network that they can hack in. That's so cool. Um, and then, um, it, their, their equivalent of AP if, of AP, um, computer science.
Do the teachers get, um, and I might have asked this in previous times, but do teachers get a sort of an analysis of their student scores to see like what, you know, if, if question number one, everybody got wrong, maybe you need to look at that a little more the next time?
So not only, not only do they have that, they have a, um, a, the AP institute gives a planning report, excuse me, and they do, um, multiple choice and free response breakdown. Not only do they do that, but they also, um, link resources that could help with preparing for that piece. So, um, that would be something to, to look at.
And are teachers given time to look at that, Jill? Like during CPT or PLCs or?
Uh, they, well, I, I would say, um.
One of those times.
Right, yeah, oh, PLCs, yep. Um, uh.
I just think that's an important piece.
I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say no in that. I don't think they've ever done the data dive, um, but this was the conversation, which is why I brought it up from yesterday, which really was not related, but then kind of came in and I was like, hey, well, these are the AP scores. And so I think for really the first time, we're going to see intentionality with looking at how, it's, it's not like a one-off. And I think in previous years, it was just, well, you're the calc teacher, teach them calculus, without thinking about it of, but it starts in Algebra I and all of those skills culminate here. So if we're seeing that our kids in the accelerated class and the AP class are struggling in this, you know, linear equations or graphing, graphing was one of them, then, then we need to be really intentional about the skills that we're doing for all kids, um, at, in that, in that sequencing. So we're gonna, we're gonna see that more this year. And that's from the leadership team. That wasn't even a directive. That's just a, A, we need to really do this.
Because the reality is when you're taking, uh, calculus, uh, you know, AP calculus, you're on a, you're in a timeline. You don't have time to go back and teach those skills that are, you know, you're inferred that you already have. So, you know, you don't have time to do that.
Agreed. Okay, that's all for me.
Any other questions for Jill?
I will say, you mentioned AP statistics, that it could be with this accelerated academy. They could possibly have the ability to take AP calculus and AP stats.
Well, I think it's important that they start talking to college, that we talk to colleges, because I, I have, um, my daughter is a nursing major. She took AP Calc. She doesn't need AP Calc, but she needs A, stats. So it's important to like, everybody thinks calc is the, the, the golden ring of the math world, but she doesn't need calc, but she does need stats, which she didn't take, so.
Interesting.
Where, you know, I think it's important for us to kind of look at that from the guidance area and what your major in college, you know, I, I know it varies a lot, but, um, we thought, she thought she was doing something good by taking AP Calc and now.
She struggled through it and now she's like, really, mom?
And now it doesn't matter at all.
That's important to make sure it's lining up. And with the eighth grade academy, we have a little bit of time to.
Yeah, but also, but also we have a biomedical pathway. And so if, if we're attracting those nursing students from that BBT piece, because we do have a pathway that could create some of this with other opportunities to differentiate and not just have a tunnel vision for, uh, high school experience, um, and then the same thing for your college, you know, your college pathway, um, that AP stats might be something to add into that intentionally to do that with the biomedical pathway. So thank you for that. I really appreciate that.
But I do. All right. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Jill.
We'll see you soon.
Thank you. Always good to see you, Jill.
All right, uh, so that concludes my report.
Except that you are the business.
Now, to the business office.
Report of the business office.
Yes.
I looked at this and I was like, if Jane thought Matt's reports were small.
So, thank you for that intro, Carrie.
Maybe it's my new glasses, but it looks great to me.
Um, so this, what I wanted to share tonight was, um, this is an expenditure report that we were able to run just right out of budget sense. And, uh, I mention that because it, it should look like incredibly familiar to everybody as far as the expense reports look before, um, in terms of the ones that we would present. But, um, this is right out of our finance system. There's no spreadsheets, there's no moving things around, there's no color codes. Um, and, you know, I think being able to see this information in real time right from our system, I mean, you can see that the date it was, time it was generated and printed, I think is important. Um, and so this is our July report, which we would have had on August fifth, um, or eleventh, I'm sorry, August eleventh, which is our last meeting, but, and we had a little more time to kind of play with this to make sure that we were generating the report that we were looking for. Uh, but this has all the same information that we were used to looking at, um, as far as the actual budgeted amount, the, you know, the amount year-to-date that was spent, the balance, the encumbrance. Um, and then that second page will show you, uh, the budget balance at this time. So a couple of really important pieces of information on this. Um, we can, I was looking at them today, generate and look at this exact same report for grants, which is great. So remember you had a separate report that showed all the grants before? We can actually run that right from here. The only thing that I need to get teased out is, um, we have a lot of grants, so there, there's just a lot to look at. And, and we have to recode them on the, in our actual, um, the account numbers tell us what grant they are, but the actual revenue type, it just says grant, 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 grant. So that does not gonna make any sense to people looking at it on the outside. Um, so we just have to go in and change. So we just title it SR three, so people know what it is. Uh, we know what it is because of the account number. Uh, but we can go in and make some of those quarter turns and make the report actually something that makes sense to people. Um, I wanna bring your attention to our salary lines, um, instructional classroom, instructional specialist. Um, and please know that within about a half dozen other function codes, we have salaries that exist. Um, so Jill and I and Monique spent about seven hours going through every single function code, pulling out all those salaries to ensure that what was budgeted and what is now going to be charged based on our, uh, turnover and staff, um, and, you know, vacancies and things that are not filled yet, but we have placeholders in for, uh, actually match well with what we budgeted for. Uh, and you would assume that, yes, well, they should. I would agree, Jill would agree. Um, but the reason I mention it is only because that is the largest chunk of our budget and also the most variable. Um, when you have three hundred staff and people, you know, change and retire and that kind of thing, uh, you can imagine there's a lot of transition there. So, um, uh, we're very pleased with where we are as far as what we've budgeted versus what we'll be charging and what we'll be expending. Um, and, uh, what you will see in the next, um, school committee report, and more importantly, the one after that, uh, is the payroll all catching up to our, our, um, salary expenditures. So that's some good news, uh, that we went about as far into the weeds as we could on that and have a, a total handle on the salary piece. So we're pleased there. Um, but overall, I, I just wanna kind of pause and see if this makes sense to folks. Because we want, again, we don't wanna change, you know, constantly change the report type. Will we, please?
Um, so the, the last column, percent budgeted, so we're sitting here in August, but there's some, uh, what's this line? Sorry, I gotta, um, director, so for example, Director of Curriculum Special, I think that's the line. Sorry, I'm kinda going blind. Um, we're at negative two hundred ten point forty-one percent. Like, is that just something we pay sooner rather than later and so then it catches up to itself?
So that may be a couple.
Just as an example?
No, that's, that's great. That may be a couple of things. So when Jill and Monique and I went through, um, and we did, we went through every single three hundred staff, um, and we looked at every single function code. We had people coded to the wrong lines. So, and Monique wouldn't know that. She's not on that side of the house, so she wouldn't know that, that she, that they weren't charged correctly. She has, she was doing everything she needed to do for sure. Um, but we were able to go through and say, oh, wait a second, that person shouldn't be charged here. That person's a special ed teacher, they should be charged here. So, um, in this circumstance, which I'll go back and research to, to look, but this could be where, uh, two things are being charged, and I'll find this out. It could be our, um, lead coach, and it also could be our, um, content lead teachers for the high school. Remember the separate, um, is part of the negotiations with them? So I have to go back and look and see if that's where those two things were charged, but.
And so that number will always be negative for the entire year because it would, just wasn't originally in that code?
It might be, or, or there might be people charged there that we've moved since.
I don't know if it's people, though.
I have to look and see.
So we encumbered a hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars?
Yep.
On that line?
I have to see what was encumbered there.
We don't even know, but we only budgeted sixty thousand dollars for the, so just so everyone is, the, the very first column, it tells you what we said we were going to spend for the whole year. And then the second to last column is telling you we, like, we're already putting that money aside for something in particular. So, um, we wouldn't have done that with a salary, would we? For the, we would, didn't encumber salaries.
No, you do. You encumber the salaries. If there are people that are already in the districts, like if you look at, if you go just underneath that, a couple of lines to instructional classroom, you'll see the encumbrance there is six point three million. That was for the teachers that were hired on that date in budget sense. So you're gonna see that number increase because that was as of July thirty-first, and we hired, you know, quite a few staff after that. So we wouldn't have encumbered those salaries. But those salaries should be in our budget, which is why we literally took that time to walk through every single person.
Right, but your first, your, your budgeted number is higher, so you can encumber and, and, and.
Yep.
Pay, and then that will shift that final percent. But in that director curriculum, that number is so small to start. You've already spent twenty thou, twenty-one thousand-ish. I don't know.
Yes, yep.
It's just, it's a big negative number on August twenty-fifth.
For sure. And the question, it's a great question. The question is, what was encumbered? Right, that made up that difference to get us to one sixty-seven.
And you were saying you did some stuff after this was.
Like down.
We've done a bunch of, it could be, right? So we've done a bunch of changes to make sure people were charged to the right place.
Sure. I just wanna make sure I understood how to read this. I mean, I, it's very similar to what we already had, but, um, I honestly usually look down that line to see negatives, pluses, and then, and then move to the left to see what I'm actually looking at. That's my way to do this.
So what we, uh, what, in, in researching, that's easy enough. All we have to do is go into that function code and see what was charged and encumbered there. So I can have that information to you tomorrow. I can tell you what's in there.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I know we have a long, I usually don't stress too much, but.
Oh, no, that's a great question.
We have a long way to go. I think guidance is the same, the same, um, thing, and, but it makes sense if it's a salary type thing there too, because we're already negative eleven point thirty-six on that line.
Seventy-three thousand is the number right before.
Yeah, right.
Health services, health is down point four.
So just.
Yeah, and, and, and I just keep looking at Jill, because when we went through, we found folks that were not charged in the right place.
Okay.
So when that gets cleaned up, you'll see those, some of those encumbrances get moved. And so this should, some of this should kind of tease itself out once Monique goes back in and recodes staff.
So potentially this will go up, that, that column will go up.
Right. Uh, it, it may.
We'll keep this, we'll keep this in my car until the next meeting.
It may. Um, it depends on, um, what was encumbered in that line. So we, again, it's easy enough to plug in any of those function codes, we know how to do that now, uh, into budget sense and run that report, so I can have that information. Is there another one you wanted to see, Tammy?
No, just, I mean, just in general, I wanted to make sure I was reading it right and that, you know.
Yeah, I mean, if you're saying that you guys have done all this work, but they may not have been put in and refreshed on this copy, then I'd just.
Right.
Get a new copy and.
Yeah, it definitely, to your point, Erin, it definitely hasn't been yet, because we just finished that. Uh, it was two days ago, uh, where we were able to finish going through, um, that process. It took, it took quite some time to make sure. We then had to go look at the grants and make sure that everybody was charged correctly to every grant. Um, and Monique does amazing work trying to keep all of this straight. So I think it was a good process for all of us to go through. And the idea was to get it all cleaned up, everything squared away, so that when Deirdre comes in, she doesn't have to worry about that. She wouldn't, she doesn't know A from B yet in terms of people. We know who everybody is and where they work and what they, what they should be charged.
Like the assistant superintendent and other district-wide administration not encumbered and not spent at all either. So this, like the last report, it gets moved around, it gets.
The very end number, the budget ballot, the last page.
What you, so what's on here is really important, and that's a great example, um, Dan, because like the assistant superintendent amount, you notice that there's no encumbrance there, but that's obviously where Deirdre's salary will come from. So that's a perfect example of if those people aren't in the system yet, they're not reflected here, right?
Sure.
So what we did, um, that you don't have here, is we went through every single human being that works in this school system with what their salary is. We did it on a separate spreadsheet and literally totaled up every person and then backed out those that we charged to grants, so we could look at the real charges versus the real budget that, that was approved for FY twenty-three. And we're, we are, we're in very good shape.
That sounds like a lot of work.
Yeah.
But I, I think it will all pay out. This, this report is going to be so accurate, because if you look at the warrants when we sign it, like, everything, it, it adds some, some. subtracts for you. So, it's not someone, it's not human error, it's not someone taking it and placing it into a spreadsheet, so.
And any line you want to see, we'll just drill down and print it for you. It's easy enough. So, I hope this will be helpful, like, in the long run, for tracking.
I think we've needed this sort of, okay.
I was just gonna ask that question. So, in the past, it was all done manually in Excel?
It was exported out, yeah. And I don't, I don't want that.
All the time, we could've saved you, Matt, sorry.
But, I will get the, for that, for the Director Curriculum line, and find out what that, what that encumbrance is. And I'll send that in my update tomorrow.
Thank you.
Sure.
Look forward to these every month.
Yes. And we'll get the grant ones included on that, too. And then, the top, just the top part, you had a separate revenue sheet that we would look at. The top part, we'll show you the revenue. So, you'll see what's coming in, this is literally what's in our account, as of that date, from, from the assessments, and from the state. And then, the grants, we'll show you the revenue on the grant side.
They pay it quarterly?
Yes.
The towns pay?
Yeah, and we'll, we'll show you the revenue and the expenditures.
And just, to be clearly, the parentheses around the revenue, that's not a negative number, right?
No, yeah, that's not a negative, no.
A lot of people think that, that's-
Only in that column is not a negative.
That column is not a negative.
Only that column, revenues, yeah. It took me a long time, a little while to learn that.
Yes.
Oh, my God, we're broke.
Okay, facilities.
Thank you for your patience.
Not a problem. Evening. All right, so, at the high school, the LED project has been completed. However, I did ask them to come back and put sensors on the gymnasium light fixtures. They started that today, so that should be wrapped up tomorrow. The two 10-by-20 metal storage containers, they've been delivered and put in place. I just have to do a little fine tune, tuning to get them lined up perpendicular with the curbstones and looking perspective. Industrial burner did come out to the high school today and started to replace the heating coil in the upstairs ceiling, in a storage facility that failed last winter. They're still waiting on one of them to be delivered, done back order, of course, but they're hoping to have it done by the start of school.
Is that what you were showing Deirdre today?
No, she wanted to see the boiler room, and she's, she's amazing. I'm like, are you sure you want to go in? You've got white pants on and everything.
I did notice the white pants as well.
She's amazing. Everything she knows, it's, I'm gonna look forward to working with her. Got a lot to learn from her. And she is a spitfire. Oh, my God.
I agree. When we met her on Monday, I was like, she wants to see it, she wants to, to be in it, so.
She must be hands-on. I think that's excellent. Yeah, lot to learn from her.
Have to get her some coveralls.
I think when she's ordering parts for, she'll want to see them when they come in.
Yeah. In fact, I have a walkthrough tomorrow with the fire department. She's like, I wish I'd be here tomorrow and see that. I'm like, it's just a walkthrough. But, yeah, awesome. Let's see, during the recertification of the boilers at the high school, it was noted that the three pressure release valves on top of the boilers are original, and they want to see them replaced, and plumbed, so that if they should expel water, it would come out on the floor, instead of spraying 180-degree burning water on people getting in there to try to work on them. So, it's a safety, safety hazard. A little sticker shock with the price that industrial boiler, burner has quoted me. So, I'm, I got our local plumber coming to give estimates while.
Thank you.
So, I'll have an update on that, next facilities report. And, at the middle school, you can see the driveway's been paved. I personally think they did a good job. I was here to make sure that they did the two-inch binder, and then the inch-and-a-half finish coat on top of that. Also, during the boiler recertification here, and I'm, I'm sorry I put "they," but "they" is the inspector for Maya, our insurance company. They come out, they do the inspection for the recertification, which they submit the paperwork to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and they give us our certificate for the boilers, on an annual basis. So, when they came out, they recommended that we put a carbon monoxide detector in the boiler room down here, and that, that was the only issue they found here. And that was just a recommendation, but it's as simple as just putting a plug-in carbon monoxide detector. So, that's an easy fix.
I thought, that will always be going off, I thought. I thought you wouldn't put them in the room.
High levels of carbon monoxide.
Okay.
There are certain levels that are unsafe.
Let's see.
That the lamp goes off.
Okay.
Yeah, it shouldn't go off.
Funny that we wouldn't have had them before, if it's an annual inspection.
Yeah. And it's just a recommendation.
Okay.
And again, so, last year, our insurance, our insurance company used Travelers Insurance to come out and do the inspection. This year, they use Liberty Mutual. So, it seems like every year, somebody different comes out, and of course, they find different things to-
They have a different checklist.
Yeah. Well, they are, and they're here to protect us.
Yeah.
JFK AF Maloney, their playgrounds, so, I believe you received the quote in the packet, and I think we're all a little sticker shocked with that one.
I'm shocked at all.
Well-
Like I said, we looked into it when we built that, that playground on the, that back playground near Menden Street. We looked into the rubber option. I'm not surprised by this number.
So, did we slow down the process of, because we were getting these quotes?
Yes.
Was the intention of getting that rubberized, the thicker mulch before school opened?
On the Millville playgrounds, and the AF Maloney playground, yeah, we were looking to get the wood chips and do it in-house. However, the JFK AF Maloney playground, that's gonna be quite the project. So, yeah, we would like to gotten it started right away.
Okay.
But, we have to get that done right, with the amount of money we're gonna spend on that.
Yep.
Would you mind reading these out loud for us, so, just so the public knows what-
The quotes?
What it, what, you know, I mean, we want it to be as ADA compliant as possible-
Mm-hmm.
And accessible.
Yep, absolutely. So, the playground at the rear of AF Maloney, for the Port and Place Rubber, was $97,000. And, for the JFK AF Maloney Playground, JFK Playground, basically, $303,000. And, for the Millville Elementary School, this one is for the school field playground, out on the old softball field. No, I'm sorry, that's, what was this? For the preschool playground on the side of the building, $84,000 for the Port and Place Rubber. And for the softball playground, it's $163,000.
Well, thank you for getting those. I think we, obviously, we definitely need to stay with what we were planning, unless someone else feels strongly about that. I, I don't know how towns and cities afford that, but-
Yeah.
You know, at least we do have an affordable option that does serve the purpose.
Right.
And hopefully, we can have that in sometime this fall, for recess use.
We're hoping, we're looking to move forward. Yeah, as soon as possible.
Thank you for taking the time to do that, though. I know that our CPAC will appreciate that information.
Mm-hmm, no problem. So, where's that leave us? The LED project at JFK is completed as well. Just waiting on them to pick up the old materials, the old ballast and light fixtures, bulbs. The boilers there had no issues, other than, when they installed the new boilers, they put a new compressor as well. And, for whatever reason, a, an ID tag was never put on it by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It's just a $50 fee that we have to send out. They give us a, an identification tag, so every year, when they come out to recertify the boilers, they recertify the compressor as well. So, that's in the works. And, of course, Millville, we talked about the playgrounds. Out by the dumpster, where the gravel meets the concrete, there's two retaining walls, made of wood. Obviously, they're original, and they are starting to rot away. And, the earth is also pushing them inwards, as you see, with all retaining walls over time. So, those need to be replaced. Working on getting a price for those. There's probably something some of our custodians would be willing to do in-house as well, cut the cost down. And, the boilers over there pass with no issues.
They're new, they should.
Exactly, right.
That's great.
Yep. The facilities, questions, concerns?
Well, thank you again for getting the poured concrete, the poured surface quotes for us.
Yeah, not a problem. That's what I'm here for.
And I, I saw the flowers when we were walking in today.
We're waiting for the momster to arrive, so we can put the baskets out on the island coming up the driveway.
Well, little bit of time for the fall flowers.
Yeah.
It looks great, it looks great for opening.
Thank you.
Everything is coming together. I mean, it's not your fault that it hasn't rained all summer, and some of our fields aren't up to par, but-
I actually put a watering tank in the back of our F-250, so it can go around and water them every morning, too, so they don't die on us.
Good idea.
But, not that we've got some rain, and some more hopefully tomorrow.
Yeah.
Should last a while.
Thanks, Scott.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
In your packet, there are surplus items from MES and the complex. Wooden card catalog, you may recall the Dewey Decimal System.
It almost needs to, like, be on display as a relic.
Right.
Send it to the historic museum.
You might sell it to, like, a movie set museum.
If you can see the list that are there.
So, looking for a motion to allow the MES surplus and the complex surplus, surplus items to be disposed of.
So, move.
Motion made by Dan, second by Tara. Any discussion, questions?
There's also a list of-
JFK, it's-
Sorry, that was my-
I know, I have three papers here, but, oh, two.
One is for MES.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous, thank you. And, I think we just have two other school, use of facility. We have BMR CPAC looking to use the high school parking lot, parking lot and courtyard?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Second.
Well, hold on, we changed, they changed the date structure over first to get off of homecoming weekend? Is that why that was, because originally, it had the 24th, 25th in there?
Yeah.
Oh, food trucks.
I think they're setting up, like, a touch truck with all the municipalities. They're gonna have tents and stuff out with the different local clubs around the community, from what I was told.
Yeah, the back page says, they're looking at police detail.
Yeah. Okay, and then, there's the music department, BMMA, looking to host a craft fair Saturday, December 3rd, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And, I think for both of these, they're group one, right? No fee for, because they are school-oriented?
Yes.
Okay. Do we want to do these together, separate?
Together.
Okay, all those, so, I'm sorry, looking for a motion for the-
Motion to approve the application for school use for BMR Music Department and BMR SD CPAC.
Motion is made by Tammy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Erin. Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Obstacles? And that is unanimous, thank you. And, school committee forum, does anyone have any items to bring? Tara?
I have one, well, I have two. My, one is a question. Jason, I came to the open door day for sixth grade today, and in our folder are all the forms to fill out. Where are we with having everything electronic?
For the start of next school year.
Next school year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I know. We were hoping for this-
Let me just not do them and see what happens.
I know. We were hoping for this year, so, we're, we're doing the new registration online first, and then, we're putting all of those forms on, and we'll be having those in place for next.
Okay, good. Because I was thinking that when you were talking about the other program earlier, I'm like, oh, maybe it'll be a surprise that-
We're calling that, like, re-registration, that will be electronic next.
All right.
Yeah.
Good. And then, just quickly, back to school events. I know that elementary school are doing the ice cream trucks, Monday and Tuesday, depending on the school. And then, middle school, the PTO is throwing a, kind of like an open-door idea, kickball game in the backfield, Monday, 6:30 to 8-ish, depending how dark it gets, how fast, but, for students and staff to kind of get back to meeting each other and play kickball if they so choose. But, the Kona shave truck will be here, and doing like 20%, if we hit a certain amount of sales, they'll get back to the PTO. So, just some good back-to-school community stuff.
Thank you. Any other?
It was just nice to meet the new, the new employees tonight. They seem very, very positive and excited to move forward.
There's a nice picture on our social media pages today, too.
I thought it was a kid, that class, they look like they belong in school, so.
Right. They all got settled, and I made them get up and go outside for a family, I said a family photo. They're like, oh, God. Like, come on, kids.
There's some nice comments on there, too, from families, I noticed, yeah. Welcoming them, and, yeah. Seems like some great energy, so.
Yes.
The whole idea of the meet and greet with the community with the new principal was fantastic. From what I've heard from people in town, it was well-received. They liked that idea of being able to ask questions.
It's an exciting time.
Any other? I'll just say, good luck to everyone, welcome back next Wednesday.
Yes.
Monday for our staff, and Wednesday for the kids. The yellow limousines will be rolling, so, please watch out for all the little ones and the big ones. And, you know, even the extra traffic on the road with all of our student drivers, and everyone getting used to the new routines and routes, so. Looks like we are moving into executive session from here, not to return to public session. So, roll call into executive session. Ted?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Erin, yes?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
And Erin.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.